8B, I just call them and say hi, nothing major. An ordinance creating a new Part 13 of Article 7 of Liquor Code Enforcement is amended, providing a temporary reduction in city sales tax within certain designated geographic areas for the purpose of funding public improvements and supporting economic development through public improvement fees. Bob Kope.
Good afternoon, City Council. Bob Kope, Economic Development Officer for the city. Today I have the opportunity to talk to you about an interesting project for the city of Colorado Springs. Every economic development project is different, but this one is truly unique. I think this is going to give the city an opportunity to bring in a unique opportunity, really a quality-of-life-type asset for our community that I think is going to be very appreciated by our citizens. So we're talking about Shields Sporting Goods. Councilmember Avila, the first graphic is a picture of a store exterior decorated for the holidays. Going to a little bit of background on Shields. Originally founded in 1902, it's an employee-owned company and is privately held. They currently have 27 locations nationwide, 6,000 employees, and they're headquartered in Fargo, North Dakota. This next image is really their signature Ferris wheel that they put in their stores. The Ferris wheel itself is really an attraction and just one of the things that sets this retailer apart from other retail venues. Some more background, Shields is proposing a 220,000-square-foot store in Colorado Springs. We anticipate them to make an $84 million investment as for land building, furniture fixtures, and equipment. They'll employ 400 people in the store itself at an average salary of $46,000-plus. That is an exceptionally high retail salary. The county average is right around $49,000, and retail salaries are typically far below that. So these are really good retail jobs. We're projecting about $60 million in annual sales, and we're also anticipating that 40% to 50% of sales will come from outside of the city limits. This is really unique among retailers. This is a very high percentage of retail sales coming from outside the trade area. So we're anticipating that they'll have two stores in Colorado. The store in Johnstown would cover the entire northern half of the state, and the Colorado Springs store would cover the entire southern half of the state. So this is a real opportunity to not only stop sales tax leakage, but a tremendous opportunity to generate sales tax surplus for the city. This next image is from one of their entrances, showing their saltwater aquarium that is, again, really an attraction of its own. Next slide shows the site plan with the proposed Shields location. This is northwest of the I-25 and Interquest interchange and the general facility of the Great Wolf Lodge. Here's another typical image of the interior of a Shields store. This is the Under Armour department. So talk a little bit about what's being proposed by the executive branch. And it's really a two-part proposal. First would be an ordinance that would provide for a temporary reduction in city sales tax in a defined geographic area for 25 years. Part two, then, would be the city entering into a credit PIF agreement, which would provide for a public improvement fee of 1% for 25 years. So putting these two tools together would create a mechanism commonly known as a credit PIF. So again, what would happen would be the city sales tax would be reduced, in this case, on the Shields site by 1%. However, the ordinance could be applied to future projects. And then, at the same time, an agreement would be entered into that would provide for the imposition of a 1% public improvement fee. Shields would then retain the revenue created by that public improvement fee, thereby creating the credit PIF.
So when you say "future projects" at the same site or?
No. The ordinance would give council the ability to approve the credit in other defined geographic areas for future projects if we wanted to use this tool again in the future. Again, another image from the interior of Shields. This is one of their extraordinary taxidermy displays that they have. They have several throughout the store. Want to talk a little bit about, first, the economic impacts. This is return on investment for our citizens. So first, you would have the construction impacts with direct, indirect, and induced construction jobs, about 916, but permanent jobs ongoing, directly employed by Shields, about 400. This would create another 145 jobs, permanent jobs, about 545 permanent jobs throughout the 25 years. And then, overall impacts on the economy. You have the initial construction impact, but the permanent impact of about $1.5 billion over 25 years. So total economic impact, about $1.5 billion, are adding to our economy about $60 million per year. Again, another interior image of the Shields store. This is probably taken by a drone in the atrium down on the second level and then partially down to the main level, again, just to give you an overall idea of what a Shields store is like. So we're estimating that the amount of the credit PIF over 25 years would be approximately $16 million, or an average annual of about $647,000 per year. There's another image from the interior. This is an animated display that they have of President Lincoln. I believe he's giving the Gettysburg Address there. So again, a lot of attractions throughout the store. So now we'll look at some of the fiscal impacts as a result of the Shields store. So first, we'll talk about fiscal impact to the city. This would assume that there were no sunset of the special funds such as TOPPS and II-C. So first, we'd look at the new retail sales. And again, this is after the credit PIF. So this is notwithstanding the $16 million in the credit PIF that would be provided back to Shields. So some of the bigger items, the new retail, of course, 1% that we would still retain, so it would be that same $16 million. But then on our 1.12 with our special fund, sales taxes for TOPPS, PSST, II-C, about $18 million over that period of time, 2% construction materials, 1.12% construction materials, construction jobs, 2%, and 1.12%. That is construction employees spending money in the economy. One of the larger ones is the permanent employment impact of the permanent jobs, spending in the community, generating about $3 million over 25 years. And then that same impact on the special fund revenues, the 1.12%, generating about $1.8 million over 25 years. So total city revenue under that scenario would be about $40 million. And again, that is net new. That is after the $16 million provided through the PIF agreement. And of that $40 million, $20 million would be general fund. So $20 million to be spent as City Council would dictate. This is a more conservative look at the fiscal impacts. This assumes that all of the special fund revenues were not extended, that they would all end when they're permanently set to sunset. So you still have the same general fund revenue impacts, but the special revenue funds would then decrease if those were not extended. So instead of $40 million, you're looking at about $28 million in that scenario, but still you're looking at the same $20 million in general fund net fiscal revenue to the city over that period of time, or about $800,000 annually. Also want to take a look at PPRTA impacts from the spending. If PPRTA were to be extended for the full 25 years, that would generate approximately another $13 million for the city, and thus taking 70% of PPRTA, which historically has been about what the city has received in benefit. However, if PPRTA is not extended, that would drop to about $2.6 million a year. So in the end, if all the dust settles after providing the $16 million through the PIF mechanism, we're still looking at $53 million in net new revenue to the city if the special funds are not sunsetted, and still about $31 million from a very conservative analysis if the special fund revenues were sunsetted. So just to summarize the impacts, approval of the credit PIF agreement and the ordinance, first of all, would result in a unique and extraordinary retail venue experience for our citizens. 545 permanent jobs, growing our economy by $1.5 billion over 25 years, and adding to our economy about $60 million per year. Estimated net new revenue to the city in $53 million over 25 years, or $2.1 million annually. This is money that helps the city fund core city services, police, parks, fire, essential services for our city, the revenues that we would not have if this project doesn't move forward. And this project is strategic in attracting sales tax surplus because such a significant amount comes from outside of the trade area. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that council members might have, and then we can talk about the process going forward.
Jill.
Thank you, Bob. Just a couple of questions about the PIF mostly. So in other PIF agreements, the city does not have an agreement. The developers just go create a PIF on their own. Why do we have to engage in that piece on this project?
So that's a traditional add-on PIF. And with an add-on PIF, what's happening is that consumers end up actually spending more when you total up sales tax and PIF.
Right.
So they're spending more than they would in a typical sales tax. So first of all, in this situation, customers at the Shields store would be paying equivalent, same amount of PIF in sales tax that they would pay in the event there were not a PIF. The other reason is that this is a structure that has been used successfully around the state and other areas for this type of an agreement. So just research has showed us this is kind of best practices for this type of a deal structure.
I see that it might be a best practice. I still don't see, if we are doing a special agreement with them to just have a 1% sales tax in there, then they could, on their own, just say "thank you" and then create a 1% PIF, I mean, PIF, on their own, just like Norwood does. And that's my second question. I have heard that Norwood already has a PIF on this property. Is that true?
I believe that's true, yes.
So there's already a, do you know what that percentage is?
I believe it's 1%, but I don't know for sure, and I can find that out for you.
So there's a 1% PIF already, and then there'll be a 1% sales tax, and then another 1% PIF. So there will still be more sales tax than what most people pay throughout the rest of the city.
That's correct. But in this case, if we were just another add-on PIF, then it would just be another 1% over and above that level.
Right, okay. So then, with this PIF, I mean, it stands for public improvements. Is that what they'll be using it for since Norwood is already using their 1% for that piece of public improvements? What will Shields be doing with that 1% in the public arena?
So really, when you look at this agreement, and it does cover public improvements, but it also provides them an inducement for making this investment. So they will be receiving the $16 million in the form of the PIF to offset their investment here. The Business Improvement District has made and will be making significant investments in infrastructure, and they will be participating in that through the add-on PIF, but also the district mill levy. So they will be paying for significant public improvements. It's just this 1% public improvement fee will help offset that, help offset their other costs of investment of placing this store in Colorado Springs.
So is that really the reason why we're doing a separate agreement? Because they're not actually using at least some of this funding for public improvements? It sounds like it's profit or payback.
So you see in the ordinance that were laid out, the criteria for agreeing for the sales tax credit, and those include things like job creation, public improvements, growing the tax base. It's all of those things.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, we've never done this before, so.
Andy?
Thank you. Yeah, I understand all the, we've gone through the numbers in great depth, and I get that, and the numbers look pretty much like they work. But I'm going to go back to something I expressed early on, which is concern that they are going to be taking business from other similar sports stores within the area. And what concerns me a little bit here is we're going to give them a special deal here whereas the others don't have it. And I'm getting increasingly uncomfortable that we're doing something here which is unique. It's a great store. I love it. Do a tremendous project. I'm just getting increasingly uncomfortable that this is the right way to go about this. So I'm uncomfortable with that. And this is the first time we've done a PIF credit, and I'm not entirely sure that this is a mechanism that I'm comfortable with, but I want to express that now. I'm not sure where I'm going with this.
Okay. Don?
Well, the bottom line is, we're doing this because other cities have done this with Shields is a great store. My granddaughter's birthday party yesterday, my wife said, "Oh, Shields coming to town. Can't wait to take the grandkids, ride the Ferris wheel, and see the aquarium." And I'd much rather have it inside the city limits of the Springs than outside. We have given profits to other companies. This is unlike a URA where it's got to be public improvements. Our CAS is giving all the airplane manufacturers that locate next to the airport money back. It's in their pocket. So I'll be supporting this, but the criteria that has been devised for council to look at was done entirely by the executive branch. The budget committee was not involved in it at all. And Jill's leading an effort now to come up with some criteria for the URA. And it doesn't make sense that we have one ordinance with one set of criteria, another pot of tax breaks with another set of criteria and everything else. So I'll support it for this go-around, but I'd like to have council work with the executive branch to go back in and really look at 1302 and come up with some criteria that all 10 of us can agree with, instead of just one of us, and make sure that it marries and that we are being consistent across the board on how we reward and do some selections. I'd like to see some objective criteria in here. I got an email from constituent before this even showed up that said, "Certain cities now are only getting incentives if their hourly rate is $20 an hour or more." And I know Dave is always worried about making sure we're just not getting the low-end retail jobs we're actually paying. And, you know, when I ran for council, first time back in 2013, the EDC's goal was to bring in jobs that pay higher than the national salary. And we haven't seen too many of those in the six years, almost six years I've been on council. So I want to go in and look at that. You know, because Bob, it's no offense, and please don't take this the wrong way, but I don't think you haven't brought us a project that doesn't meet criteria B that says it will not be financially viable if it doesn't do it. Well, Don and Andy's hot dog stand can't get a second card unless we get a tax break, you know? So, you know, we got to come up with some better criteria than what's in 1302 for the future.
Okay.
Bill? Well, first of all, this is precedent-setting. That's what this is all about. All right? This isn't just Shields. This is precedent-setting forever, to be used across the spectrum. Now, I see no problem with them paying their fair share of taxes because we ask everybody else to do the same. And that's what I have trouble with, is what about Dick's Sporting Goods, which is a direct competitor? Will we go back to Dick's and offer them the same kind of resolution? What you had pointed out was, one of the reasons they're asking for this money is because there's already a PIF on the property, and the PIF, in addition to the rest of these environments, may be a non-competitive position. But coming from that neck of the woods and watching it explode with businesses, I mean, I'm willing to challenge them and say, "Listen, here's what the deal is, okay? If you don't want to build it here, not a problem, because there will be other people who will come in and build it." And there's a whole host of businesses all through that neck of the woods who are not being given the same opportunities, incentives. This is not an infill project. It's a mini mall, more so than anything else. It might be a nice place for us to go, but so is Wolf Creek Lodge, right down the street. And, you know, there's plenty of other places out there. I really don't see a need to incentivize these folks, and I don't like a precedent put into play when we don't have all the criteria and understanding of what it really means throughout the entire environment. I personally and professionally don't like to give away taxpayer money unless I clearly see a public benefit, and that's not here. It's already put into the system. I'm not going to support it until you guys come back with a more substantiated case, if nothing else. But I'm not going to approve this kind of thing.
Okay. Jeff, did you want to respond? I have David next, but you want to go first, David?
Out of respect to the council member.
Well, it's nice to get respect.
Yeah.
Enjoy your time.
But it's about time, huh?
First of all, Bob, thank you. It's an informative presentation, and the public benefit is the fiscal impact analysis that you talked about. And it's how many jobs at $47,000 a year? I think you indicated that there are some benefits that go along with these jobs at the last time we talked about this and things like that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I do think that saying that there's not a public benefit is somewhat misleading in that the public benefit doesn't have to be strictly a benefit to the city coffers that come directly from the store. It comes indirectly through the multiplier and other things like that. And I think, if you could elaborate just a little bit, Shields, as I understand from the prior presentation, was looking to have two stores in Colorado, one on the north and one on the south. And Colorado Springs was in competition with other communities to have Shields here. If you could elaborate on that history?
That's correct. That's correct. So actually, we were in competition for communities outside of Colorado, but they were also considering sites outside of the city limits that could have had a very negative fiscal impact on the city had they located, say, for instance, in Fountain or Monument. It would have had the same competitive impact that, again, people are concerned about, but it would have had a tremendously negative fiscal impact on the city, not only in sales tax leakage, but then it would have also, we would have foregone the opportunity to attract that sales tax surplus. And just to elaborate that on some of the other comments, you know, we never take any incentive that we're considering lightly, especially when it's in retail and hospitality. That's why it truly does have to be a unique situation before we would even consider bringing that to City Council. And to Councilmember Knight's comment, I'm sure we'll be happy to sit down and take a look at the criteria. I think the criteria and the ordinance were taken from some other examples of ordinances around the states or other places, but we can certainly build on that for the future. But we do not take these incentive agreements or incentive proposals lightly. And we haven't used them for retail or hospitality too many times in the city, but where we have, they've been extremely beneficial. The Lowe's at Citadel Crossing, I think, was critical for southeast Colorado Springs. We were convinced they were going to walk away from that project, and they didn't because of that agreement. And the Mining Exchange Hotel. That came at a time when nothing was happening downtown, and that really was one of the major sparks that started turning downtown around. So these can be very effective and very beneficial for the community in addition to the net fiscal benefit. So approving this project results in more tax revenue for core city services, not less.
And just to elaborate a little bit philosophically, because I think there is this expectation from members in the community, and sometimes members up here, that a single project should be one that is not incentivized. And I think as a philosophical statement, we can agree with that. But in terms of the reality of a community like Colorado Springs in competition with other communities and other places where this thing could go, how realistic is it to say that we're going to get this kind of economic development if we don't have these sorts of negotiations with stores and industries that want to come in?
Agree with those comments.
Well, I'm asking you to elaborate. How realistic is it, if we're saying we're not going to give you anything, how realistic is it that we're going to get anything?
Well, I think if you just look at history of these other projects, I believe Shields and other retailers of that caliber, they receive incentives wherever they go. They did in Johnstown and in several, if not all, of their locations. It's just what it takes to make it happen.
And so, from my perspective, I may not like it, but I think it's beneficial to the city. So I will support this, even though I wish that it's out of the goodness of their hearts that they'll come in and turn down the benefits that they get everywhere else.
Yeah, yeah. If it goes to Fountain, we can flagpole and exit, can't we?
Bad.
I'm sorry. Jeff?
I wasn't sure if Mr. Murray wanted to respond back to council, as a rebuttal to Councilmember Guy Singer. Are you okay with me speaking at this point in time?
I will defer to your speaking at this time.
I greatly appreciate that. I think what's important about this is that every day we have to look at being creative. How do we ensure that we have a sustainable tax base? How do we preserve our tax base? But at the same time, is how do we look at creating or expanding the tax base? It's not about taking, you know, revenues and picking winners and losers. What's about is how we grow the pie. And it's the growth of that pie that's very important to our revenue. And so, that's, Bob loves economic development. He lives and breathes economic development. He's an optimist when it comes to all of our economic development projects, and you want somebody to be optimistic. I get to be the person who's the realist, and Bob and I have very realistic discussions. And the mayor and I have very realistic discussions. What I will say, and the argument has already been presented today, is that if we weren't doing something to attract this business, they could go to the unincorporated county, they could go to other jurisdictions. What's unique about the county is if they went to other jurisdictions or stayed within the county, the county got its piece. We would not. And so, what is unique about this store is you have individuals in this country who love Aspro, that love Cabela's, that love Shields. And when you... And when you look at creating, you know, shopping tourism, Shields creates shopping tourism. People come to Shields specifically based upon the product, the store layout, and the benefits associated with this organization. When we visited Jonestown and spent time there, Bob and I on Thursday night spent some time in discussions with the town manager in regards to this specific project. And they're very thankful that they have this particular store in their community because it does represent significant taxable income that comes to their jurisdiction. And so what we're trying to do is look at the preservation of our tax base, but also growing our tax base, and that's why this project is so important. Going back to the reasons why we're doing a PIF, our responsibility is also to protect this council, protect the mayor, and protect the city in regards to liabilities. By structuring it this way, we afford the city certain protections associated with that. Mr. Florzak is here in the audience if there's any specific questions as it relates to it. But this is not just a simple economic development agreement. This is how we structure, very similar to what Jonestown did. It's very similar to what other jurisdictions in this state have done to promote certain types of shopping tourism. In Castle Rock, they have based several different types of economic development through these types and incentives, but through this particular process.
Bill? I still have difficulty incentivizing people coming here when we're the number one this and number two that and everything else. That neck of the woods is exploding, and the demographics and the financial picture of that, it makes it the center of a population, okay, that is economically viable for this size and scope of a business. We should not have to incentivize them for anything. They should want to be here, which is what a lot of these other firms are saying. We want to be here, we're not asking for incentives. At the same time, you have to clearly understand, and I do, okay, that we're robbing Peter to pay Paul with this incentive. All the other firms that are doing business in this city that are paying taxes and our sales taxes, okay, to support the infrastructure here, okay, will now be set up to a more pleasant environment. We shouldn't have to do this. To even suggest it is, makes me wonder whether or not we're one or two or anything. But we should not give these organizations tax incentives, okay, that do not directly relate to public infrastructure, okay? And clearly, I don't, I still, you said public infrastructure here, but since it's already built into the organization that runs that whole place, there's no need for it. This is a direct profit line, okay? And I don't think this is a proper place for us to do it, much less be precedent-setting. And I want to know where we're going to get the 16 million from. If the philosophical concept here is that we relay taxes to what the needs of the city are, why don't we reduce everybody's sales tax 1%? Everybody across the city, and that will incentivize everything. And that's why I find this terribly, fiscally, I think it's fiscally irresponsible, actually.
Murph?
Well, Bob, I just wanted to thank you for a very good presentation. The economics of it make perfect sense to me, and it'll have my full support.
We heard you both.
Okay, okay. I think this, it is tough to discuss the incentives, but it makes sense here, and I think it is a responsible way to move forward, so I would be supporting it.
Don? So mine is a process question on how this works. Assuming the ordinance gets approved, this now becomes a tool in your toolkit. So I guess in two weeks, we'll vote on the ordinance. Is that same vote then giving you authority to offer Shields up to 1%? Because the other tools that you have in your toolkit, you still have to bring back to council for approval. So are we doing one vote in two weeks on the ordinance, and then another vote in three or four weeks once you have a final agreement with Shields? Or how does, or does one vote cover all next week?
So what we're proposing going forward is tomorrow, we would be presenting the ordinance for approval. And if, if it were approved, then in two weeks, we would come back, second reading on the ordinance, and approval of the credit PIF agreement. And we're doing that, trying to keep up with the Shields schedule.
Andy?
Yeah, I, a lot of, some of the same concerns that Mr. Murray has, but I wouldn't phrase it in quite the same way. The, one of my things I want to kind of touch on is, he's wondering where the 16 million is going to come from. It doesn't exist. I get that, I get the numbers, and I understand how this all puts together financially, and I get the plus. I'm, what I'm queasy about is going down and using this particular mechanism of a credit PIF. That's what I'm very queasy about. The airport commercial zone is for everyone in that zone that has that kind of business, and that's not what's going on here. This is specifically targeted for a specific business, and that's where I'm queasy about. You go next door, a couple places down, using, their competitors don't get this. And that's my concern, is we're giving something that a competitor doesn't have. So I'm uneasy with this. I'm just a lot fair.
And just to warn you, I know that Mountain Shalae is going to come by tomorrow, and I imagine other people are going to come by and talk about why they feel this isn't fair to them. So hopefully have a good lively discussion, but, you know, I tend to agree that this is just too good to turn down. It really is, if it really is 40 to 50% from outside the region. You know, I always feel very proprietary about our sales tax and our general fund, and if you think about who we are as a city, we tend to provide the bulk of the services that the residents in the county use. If it's public safety, if it's parks, if it's other kinds of infrastructure, where they go to work, the roads that they drive on, where else they have to use our services. And so I feel that in this particular case, I would be less likely to do it for something else, but in this particular case, it's hard not to support it. It really isn't. It really is. Bill?
Well, I, okay, this begs the question. Where the heck did you get a 40 to 50% out-of-region number?
That's been Shields' experience, and there are other 27 locations.
I would like you to provide me all that Shields information that you're giving to us 40 to 50%. And how big is, what is it called? Jonestown? Where's this thing located?
It's north of Denver, pretty much at the interchange that leads into Greeley.
What's its population?
I don't know what the population of Jonestown is.
Probably a few thousand, yeah.
Okay, so it's basically a truck stop. So guess what? It's a big economic development, right, for that particular neck of the woods?
Yeah.
Is it the biggest employer in that city?
What I'm going to say is, is that there were several Colorado municipalities competing for that northern store. Jonestown was one that was selected, but it was based upon their willingness to work with Shields and also the incentives that were provided to Shields.
I'll work with Shields, but not give them incentives. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, we will duke this out again tomorrow. But thank you, Bob. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Because there's a timeline for Shields. They want to get it up and running quickly.
They want to start construction as soon as possible.
Okay.